Okay. Bob, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, okay. Welcome everyone. Yes. Just. Turn the volume down. We're in the voice here. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. He is right here at the moment. He'll be joining us later. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2022. And this is the meeting of the remainder of the planning board. This is the high 30 day that it is being recorded. I'd like to begin with a roll call here. We'll begin with the folks who are participating remotely during COVID. Can you be rushed, Jim?
I cannot hear you at all. Okay.
You don't have.
Yeah.
Let's see if that's any better.
Good time, Bill.
Oh.
How's that, Jim?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Uh, Bill's close. Can you hear me?
I can just barely hear you, Bill. Bob.
Oh. Um.
Should, should. Let me just move over there.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll see if everybody else can hear. Can you hear Natalie and Bill?
Just barely.
Hey, let's pull you guys over here. I'm sorry, guys.
Uh, can you hear the other kids?
I, 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 the same here vaguely. It's, um, it's echo. It's like a small echo chamber.
All right, I'm moving my feet.
Where you just dropped on that table, Chris?
Okay, all right.
Better.
How's that? You sit over there?
Oh, so much better.
Yep, good.
Oh, sorry, guys.
No, it's fine.
Hey, Natalie, how are you?
Yeah, continue to pick you up.
Okay. Let's continue with our roll call. Um, Jim Coleman?
Yep.
Great. Annette Garavedian?
Here.
Natalie Robert?
Here.
And Bill Grandoff.
Thanks.
Excellent. So, um, I think we should begin with the second item today, which is a public hearing. Are there any objections to that?
No.
Okay. So let's, uh, open public hearing. This is a special permit application filed by Alan Quinn. She is here with us today. The petitioner is requesting a special permit to relocate the existing Amory Tomb, which is a farmer brewery use from its current location at 76 Main Street to 58 Main Street in Maynard. So before we begin, I'm hoping that, Bill, if you could please begin by explaining what we need to decide to.
Yes. Okay. Has had a farmer's brewery for probably, um, I guess about four years now.
Yeah, I think it was licensed five years, open for.
Yeah. Um. And a farmer brewery requires a specific permit from the planning board on, it has specific restrictions, but I'm happy to go that the board's interested in it. But essentially, it, I, is to fulfill that there is a, um, the, the, the establishment is limited to, uh, serving, uh, beverages that are manufactured there. Certain amount of, um, components have to come from, um, in the state.
Yeah, regional agriculture.
Yeah, and, um, right now, the, uh, we've had, uh, these, through, uh, our pre, um, application check, there's been absolutely no problems or anything. Fire, police. Uh, the applicant explained where physically he's moving and why, and most importantly, um, I think in clarifying that, uh, you had a question about the parking lot, one of the board did, and you can explain that. Um, this is not, uh, this is independent of the, um, uh, serving of alcohol outside. That was done through the select board. That's, that's. So this board is looking at, um, approving a special permit, moving it, where, where, where is a new special permit? Uh, the restrictions, they were really, um, in the previous, um, uh, special department, there were, we didn't have any conditions approval. Other than then there was a question about aroma odors, uh, which we haven't had any problems with. And that, I think, was the point.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Do you know what the question was about the parking? I'm happy to answer.
Yeah. Why don't you tell us about the project and what you're doing and in the course of that?
Got you, yeah.
Talking about the parking.
So, yeah, so we've, as, as Bill said, we've been operating there since, um, 2018. So we're just about to celebrate our 40th anniversary. Um, we're a small taproom. We seat currently 46 people inside roughly. Um, we produce under 500 barrels a year, so very small, um, just really a community-focused brewery. Um, and a couple of years ago, our building sold, and we have new landlords. So we are, uh, we're not able to renew our lease. We are ten at will. We weren't able to come together on terms. So we started looking for a new location. Um, in the meantime, with COVID and everything happening, we purchased out the rear parking lot, um, which I forget, it's attached to 58, uh, Main Street, but it's parcel 182, which is the beer garden is currently located on part of that parcel, um, which is kind of the alleyway, which used to be the drive-through for Shawmuck Bank back way back. Um, and so, uh, the goal here is to tie the indoor and outdoor spaces together. Currently, we're operating the taproom indoors at 76 Main Street, and then operating the beer garden seasonally outdoors. Uh, they're very disjointed, so it's two separate premises, almost two businesses, if that makes sense. This move would allow us to hopefully tie them together into one unified space, um, between indoor and outdoor seating. Um, here tonight to seek approval for the use on that space. This is again, as Bill said, not for the licensing portions, it's just to get the use approval. Um, and we've been meeting with various, um, town officials and stuff and, and gone through this process for some time with them. Um, in regards to that, that rear parking lot, um, it's the park lot we currently use to service our existing brewery. We're required to have our own parking. Um, and so we do, it will continue to service the new locations, literally tied together to that back parking lot. Um, where we are currently, it's non-contiguous. There's actually a small little cutout. You can't see, I guess you can see the town map, but there's like an easement section and stuff over on the side of B4. I think it's B3, the lot there, um, which is where we are currently. So it's, you know, just moving over about 100 feet, um, continuing the same business practice, same model, same everything. It's really just about getting into a space where we can stay, hopefully. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's better, Gary.
So, sorry, man. So just to clarify, you own, that, that parking lot is kind of confusing to me. You own the part that's immediately adjacent to the buildings, and the town lot is the separate part.
Town is not on any of that side of the street. So this is a very big confusion with the town. Parcel 182, I have a map here.
Okay.
This is all privately owned. And then, so where we are currently, if I can show a map to you guys, I'll pass it around.
Yes.
Um, 290 is the new building here, like three bays. This is 58.
Yep.
Here. Um, then we have the alleyway, which is the beer garden is currently. This is, uh, the Harry Potter store and Pizza Express. This is our current building here. So this is actually just a parcel here where the telephone poles are.
Yeah.
Kind of divides that parking lot. It was originally three, like, three parcels.
Yeah.
Lumped together, and then when they were, um, re-subdivided, it became two parcels, right? So it's this one behind the building we're in currently, and then the rest, which is the other side. Um, so this is not town property. That is privately owned 100% this entire lot. Town properties across the street against the river, which they decided to park on.
Yes.
So that's actually.
My apologies.
A whole separate, it's okay. It's a whole separation we deal with constantly, because people are always told to park in the, the parking lot.
Yes.
So, but that is our, we do own that parking lot.
Great.
We are 50% owner, the building owner of our new building, who happens to be my mother. Um, she owns the other 50%. So we own it jointly. The idea is that anything ever happens, um, her only beneficiary, it just makes it easier. And so, um, we had all siblings and everybody was involved previously, and now it's just myself to buckle them up. So to continue operating. Does that help at all?
Yes. Um, yeah, and if there's a way we can show this to Jim and Annette, although, I mean, Jim and Annette, you know the parking lot, yes?
There is not a way to. There now, maybe.
You can probably holding it up.
Probably won't. Yeah. Yeah. So if, if you, if you think about it, if you look at it from, you know, kind of the top area from the main street side, everything on the building side of, of where these buildings are, on the beer garden side of, of, uh, Main Street, or River Street, excuse me, between River and Main, is private.
Right.
The part town parking is between River Street and the river.
My apologies.
That's okay. No, just, that's a big.
Yes.
It comes up all the time.
That's important to know. Thank you.
Can we just take a minute, Bill? Where's, where's the camera that I can walk over to?
Uh, turn.
Right here.
You're in front of the.
No, right here.
Oh, yeah, you can do that too. That's a good point, too.
I don't know if it'll work, so.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's gonna get your face the whole time.
No.
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 Yeah, it's gotta go to Bill's. Sorry, I'm watching.
We can use this right there. Scam our words in here.
Well, unless we can.
Sorry, I would have sent over the town BIS.
Normally downstairs.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. So. By the way, folks, this is River Street along the bottom here. And the parking lot is north of that, which is on this picture here, and here is Main Street. And this is the location. Is this the existing building?
No, 290 is the, parcel 290 is, uh, 58 Main Street. That's the new location.
It's Fishgate. That's the location we're moving to.
Yeah.
So, um.
Parcel 183 is which store? Par, I'm sorry, give us a switch. 183 is, is Harry Potter and Pizza Express.
Yeah.
And then there, there are two little buildings, and there's another building on the other side.
And the, the little alley between 290 and 183 is where you go.
That's the, your current setup. Correct. The outdoor space.
Okay. Can you see that out quickly, Annette and Jim?
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't sound fire escape.
Take any seats.
Right. And for the, for purposes of the roll call, just like to indicate that Chris Alzino has joined us. And Chris, we had a, a presentation on the application, and Bill helped, uh, introduce the project to us. And at this stage, um, we're, we're seeking to, are any questions that anybody has answered? So, um, Bill, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Bill Namborso. Is, is the recommendation that whatever conditions around permanent stuff with permanent transfer, does this special permit?
Yes.
But they don't. No, they weren't.
No. What we were concerned about at the time, uh, we asked, we had, uh, Alan to come back, uh, that he'd check back in like six months. Because we were concerned about aroma. And, uh, the, we were in, you know, we were in, there's going to be any problem. Uh, the parking was, um, at the time has been.
Okay, all right. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, okay. Um, how about Jim Coleman? Do you have any questions about the project?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Okay, and Annette?
You're on mute, Annette.
You're muted, Annette.
I'm sorry. I don't have any questions. I'm just looking at the building right now.
Okay.
Uh, to give Chris a little time, can I just ask, is there a plan to, this is not relevant, but I'm just gonna ask anyway. Is there a plan to, like, renovate that space so that there is, uh, access to your outdoor space?
Yeah, so we're working on that right now with building department.
Great.
Uh, all of that, but that's, yeah, we're.
That'll be.
We're two years, we're two years down into that.
Okay.
We're, yeah, just level ways to go.
Just curious.
Yeah. I, I have a question, Mr. Jarrett. Um, I'm, uh, Bob's the chair right now, so. I'm sorry, yeah. Interesting question.
Yes, Bill?
Um, how did, could you refresh your stuff? Food, because we had the added some food there, right?
So originally, there was no food requirement. Um, the state law doesn't require food with the service of alcohol. Um, some town, we just always do, but the town, uh, does not. Um, and neither does the state. Um, that being said, once, uh, code requirements went into place, we were required to provide food in order to remain open to the public through COVID. Um, and so, once we opened the kitchen, we'll continue that. Uh, we worked with the Board of Health. The plan is actually to add, um, a more of a formalized kitchen at the new location, um, because we're building it with the plan to have it, right? We had to add it on after the fact and kind of fit it where we could previously. Um, but not, I mean, it's small stuff that pairs with beer. It's not like a, a full restaurant service. That makes sense.
Oh, I do have one other question. What is the capacity of the new space in terms of, is, we said 46 people?
We're 46. Currently, we won't know until we get through with the architect and the building inspector and plumbing and everybody else. And that's all to be determined once the space is designed out.
Does it look like radically, like, hundreds?
No, 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 no. Right now, it's actually the indoor space would be less. Um, and the outdoor space would be what we have now for outdoor space, so total would be larger.
Right.
But the indoor space actually is a smaller indoor space. It's more dedicated towards retail, um, and, um, small seating.
Okay.
Makes sense.
What did the business hours?
Uh, currently, our license hours are 8:00 AM to midnight, I believe it is, um, Monday through Saturday, and then noon to, um, 9:00 PM on Sunday. I don't know. I think that's our selected hours, but our license hours. Um, we generally operate currently like Thursday through Sunday into nine, and then noon to six on Sunday.
Okay. And Chris, do you have any questions?
Bill, remember, what's, what's the scope of this review? Is this a use only?
That's correct.
So there's no site plan review? There's no DOD review?
It's an existing, yeah, they're, they're under, you know, it's existing, um, what's the word? It falls under. You are checking under, you know, under the special permit we're going under. You're, you're still checking the criteria, which includes parking, which includes, um.
Is this a transfer of a special permit?
Not.
Or a new special permit?
No, it's a new special permit. We can't transfer that.
However, since the move is so close and the parking is the same, and the capacity seems to be the same or less, you know, like, it's pretty comparable. The last special permit did not have any conditions, correct?
Yeah.
So presuming that four years ago, that planning board looked more de, more detailed at the parking capacity and all those sorts of things, that's, uh, which in my head is going at least.
That makes sense. And so our scope is essentially parking, traffic patterns, if you think that there's an impact there, and any other types of additional impacts, right?
Correct.
So it sounds like we've looked through parking and don't think, you don't see any impact from a parking standpoint. We don't see, we're not discussing the intent of the use, the use itself as permitted by the town. We don't need to get into food, really, do we? We don't, that's not necessary at all.
Or the help.
Um, and the remainder of it regarding the space itself is, will be dictated by building code.
That's correct. I do.
So is there any other part of our scope besides parking and pedestrian flow?
Like signage?
Dynamite, yeah, correct.
Yeah, you agree, right. It's, it's right. It's printed on the, uh, official page. Yeah, I'm gonna run down. I wanna double check. I'm 99% sure. I checked about the decision, but I thought I uploaded it on the workup.
Yeah, so when I go down this list, social, economic, and community needs are served by the proposal. I read the proposal previously. I, I, I agree with number one. I'm looking under the justification statement. Sounds like we've looked at parking, traffic flows, and safety. I believe, did the, did the police chief comment already?
Police chief and car chief were both.
That's, that's what I thought, all right. Um, did we talk about adequacy of utilities? Did we get a DP? Did we, did Bill talk about DPW?
Yeah, they said they were.
Uh, neighborhood character and social structures. I, I think I attended, uh, Man and Fest. Clearly, this establishment fits really well into the neighborhood character. Um, impacts to the natural environment. I don't, I don't see much from our standpoint. Potential fiscal impacts, I think it only improves from a fiscal standpoint. I mean, I don't. I think we've covered it. I just wanted to make sure we're comprehensive with the review. Is there anything else?
Well, I believe that they're also fired for the DOD special permit, which is downtown. And I would think that it could have the outdoor use to meet the pedestrian enhancement activity criteria of that.
So we need to look at this from, uh, from a standpoint of 945. Uh, 445. 946. Sorry, that, that's, that's just a red code.
Gotcha. Everyone would do it.
Sorry, the downtown overlay.
Thank you. Gotcha. Yeah.
Does that make sense?
No, I got you, yeah. Yeah, that M D O D.
So, so we, are we required, we're gonna spill, but it sounds like you think we're required to crime charge. You think we're required to vote from a special permit or a DOD standpoint?
I don't know. I'm just looking at Arizona. It says, projects need a special permit for locations within the DOD. They are also required to demonstrate existence through the 96. I'm quite into it.
Yeah, I feel like we've done that in the past.
Yeah, and I think it's fine. I think we made the generic one. I think, uh, proposed use will not have as beneficial impacts, that we're not outweighed by any adverse impacts, which I think count in. And all the considerations are positive, and it seems for me that even need for the DOD special product criteria, given that it enhances the pedestrian activity downtown.
We did, I checked, there, there were no conditions. Only conditions was that Alan came back since after the merger.
There's a date for this special permit?
There was.
There. Date on this special permit? The previous?
Will, will this happen like? Right away? Oh, no, no, no. So we're doing, yeah, we're going through this process. Um, and then when, when we talked about with, um, uh, zoning, building, and planning, um, commissioners here, yeah. This is all kind of a lead-up to, to getting all of, everything else worked on. So let's get through this piece, um, get the use approval, and then finish up everything else. We're talking at least six more months. We're hoping part of this is that at the end of December, that outdoor premises goes away. Um, that the, the ABBCC is that they're not going to renew that. Um, we've said that three times so far. But, uh, they said, no, for real this time, we're not gonna renew it. And so this is kind of our option to get to that outdoor space as well. Um, so we would anticipate using outdoor strays next, um, next spring, provided we get the, it was here, we get to the other, it's okay. Um, and then limited retail in that space until we get through all the other hurdles down the line. So we're, we're, we're talking next April, I believe, at least. And that's a. All right, so we get. But there's no danger that a special permit, if you're authorized, might expire before you.
Oh. For the trigger?
Yeah. No, ours gives them three years to act. Yeah.
No.
Or. And that can wait if, I mean, um, there's, if it did, they just come.
So what, so what, what, what Bill was saying is that if you grant special permit dated tonight, you have two years to exercise the establishment of that special permit, which means essentially you have to open business or start the construction, I think, maybe, in this case.
Well, or come request. You can come request.
Yeah.
But when, you're from the time, from the effective date of the permit, which would be, if the board approved tonight, it would be, say, you know, 20 days or whatever. Okay, you'd have two years to, yeah, and, and if for some reason, and like, we had, we've had one or two, because of COVID that came in, the board has, we've been up, the board can hear it, consider it, I think, considering that it's a good reason, it can extend.
And our, our, our anticipations, as I said, spring, um, to get to at least limited functionality. We're not gonna, we don't anticipate having everything on board, but at least be utilizing the space. Um, so we're already through, we have state and federal approvals already on this. Um, the only piece for certain will be the licensing through the select programs and through those pieces.
You mean, when you say state and federal, there's periods.
Yeah.
You, you need, oh, you need their approval to move?
Yeah, so with the federal government and state, you actually, um, can't move a farmer brewery. You have to establish a new one.
Is it?
And so, so what we have right now is we have, um, an existing farm brewery at the federal level at both 76 and 58, existing farm brewery at the state level at both places already, because those take so long. Takes like six months to get to the federal, another four months to get to the state. So this is like usually two years of applications and going through all of these pieces. You know, licenses in, in place in order to actually start the plot.
I feel like we could renumber Main Street easier than that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Same name for both, uh.
Same. Same, same, yeah, same, I think.
Sure wants that little vehicle to start.
Or just, I wish it was done. But you know how things are.
All right.
So the only question I have, Bill, is whether he needs to come back to have his signage approved.
If he's the only time.
With what?
Yeah. You, you know, I was just thinking of my dump. Um. The only thing, the only reason that Alan would be a, uh, sign permit for mine is if he exceeded what was allowed under the code. So right now, I'm assuming you're going to be normal sign.
And all of our signage is part of our approval through building management. So that's all part of the signage, another consideration.
But it is. It's, yeah, but, but it's only approved under building if it needs.
Correct. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be.
Right, yeah. So you don't, you don't say go on markers and go on outside of the code.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is you're anticipating constructing a building assigned within the town code.
Correct.
And not needing to come back to this.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting. I just read on the last decision, which, when we did it, um, Bill, if you remember, this one, this was why we made that change to zoning bylaws, uh, DOD. After, that was why.
Which, which change?
We made a change a couple of years back about uses in the downtown overlay district, because we're confused when to use a downtown overlay district criteria and when not.
Right. It's like sort of overlaying district, right?
Right. But you weren't using it. You were just to use, so we, we've spent a change after. But Bill's right. We, we just about it. Now I remember this.
So. Well, further discussion, I'd be happy to make one.
Go for it.
Yeah. Um, in just a second, just want to confirm that we leave a motion for 1042 for chapter 48, section 8, for 9.46.
Where 10.42 is the criteria, which 48, you're correct.
Yeah.
And then we would do, we, that, we would find that it was consistent with that section, and then with the downtown overlay district criteria.
Um, I think it's two, right? So it's.
Yeah.
1042 is one motion. 946 is a second motion.
However, you can, you can do it either way.
Or make it all one motion.
Yeah, I would. I mean, if we don't.
Well, it's the old good Bill crunch out of the making motion.
You know. It's right here, right here.
But just to be clear.
No, it's a good question, because it wasn't, Bob. That's what I'm saying. We, last time, we were talking about that. We, we walked out on it. And we were saying, well, wait a minute, if it's a use, and that's why we made that change, so.
Okay.
Which, this is perfect, but then.
But, but now I'm, I'm just left wondering, is it two motions or three motions? Is a separate motion required for chapter 48, section 8?
I had. You mean as opposed to the DOD motion?
Um, as opposed to, when we do 1042, do we do 40A, section 8 with it?
Oh, oh, I see. I, I see. I think 1042 references that in the, in the zoning bylaw in the beginning of the legal system. Relatively consistent with it.
Well, I know the, the application mentions it.
Yeah, we, we, and, and based on, I had town council with us. After we got a particular. Application we're working on, and I know she rolled them into one, like, but. But that it consists with balance consistency and we. And then voted for the consistency and to approve it one because the finding there, we have a finding. I could run through the findings spell it all.
So we bring them through the criteria. So we need to make a separate finding, or can we just approve the project consistent with ten-four-two?
It would be good form to run through and identify which I have here in the last one, if you want to use.
Okay. Uh, Bill, we don't know. We'd like to make more changes while.
Good luck, Bill.
Make a motion when we find that. The proposed projects is. Consistent with ten point four point two in that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impact to the town or the neighborhood. Further that the proposed use is consistent with section nine point four point six of the downtown overlay district special permit criteria. And therefore that we authorize special permit to be given for a farmer brewery at fifty-eight A Main Street. Consistent with the application and hearing information regarding layout and operations.
Round of applause.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So Will Fargo, Chris Hoffman?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Jim Coleman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So you knew this, five to nothing, congratulations.
Appreciate it. See you when we're open.
Yeah.
Good luck.
We need the motion.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a second?
Oh, yes, the second, our second closing here.
And this is up to be by Will Fargo, it can be by.
Everybody's Will Call.
Will Call, okay. Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Coleman?
Yep.
And I'm a yes. So the public fair is all closed. And we can continue with the item three, the planning update.
Planning update is that. Well, do that. We are. For the auto mill road corridor. Our focus groups are starting next week. I'll be busy. Wednesday and Thursday, we're having a different evening, we have a bunch of focus groups. Our focus group made up of business owners and stakeholders, we're having a group of residents. We have a group of. What do you mean? Um. Property owners, property owners, yeah, and boards of the base. So it would be very interesting. It's been good. Um. We also. Then we'll be moving into, after we get the focus groups, we're gonna have another joint meeting, I believe. Probably early December. And it was pretty, the, 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 you, did you guys get the memos out? I sent a little memo with the results of survey and stuff. And that's pretty cool. You know, you have it. I wanna, I wanna make sure we have all this stuff accessible. You know, as we go along. My big fear. Is that. When we do these surveys, I try to keep it so it's handy. So when I have. A board or I have somebody who's considering something, we can say, well, you know, we don't want to forget, we did a survey and excellent people. Board this. In other words, my new thing is, boy, purity of the minority. And, 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 um, so I, I think that was, so that's next week. Those are, are just the, are gonna be the focus groups facilitated by MAPC. The other thing that's going on. Next week is that. Not. Really connected to this group, other than obliquely through me. Um. There has been an appeal of a zoning board session that was made. Um, and so it's gonna be like we did, you guys remember, we did it with one fifteen. So I'll be with my zoning board next Tuesday night, exactly. And that involves the Summer Street. Property, which this is not in those boards, other than as I bring it up because it's a general interest for our home occupation work. Um, and it is. It, it, it's. Interesting. Um, oh, and then I also, I did the memo, I have a memo. I'm gonna schedule us for the board selection, we refer it back. For our zoning articles, we're gonna tweak up, if we get up the final stuff, we'll be home-based business. If that's ready, we'll bring it all. And I, I might need you to come with me, Chris, because I'm bored with that. So I don't think I'm running renegade. And I know. That's what I got.
Well, the, the. Family Street EBA of the L. Is it the applicant municipality or the others?
The butters have appealed it. Um. And it's, um, like this. And, um. You know, we had town council run the last, we kind of suspected that might happen. So it was very similar to what we did, you know, with ours. Um, but, um. It, it, it's, it's interesting because it's, you know, a lot of the. No, I don't get too much, but, but it, it, it's, it'll, it'll definitely, we'll want to look at it, you know, and it'll influence how our. Our homeless businesses. Are. viewed. I think the decision was really good. I think, I think I said to you guys, probably the decision that was appealed.
I don't recall.
Why? I don't correspond that frequently. Um, all right, I do a lot, it's probably in my spam, your spam, but.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I have, anyway.
And what's coming up for the public hearings? You, you, you gave us made it.
I have, yeah, Mayor Crosses, or something. I think that's it, I think, I think that's it. We got. Couple others, I got some more home occupations coming, but.
Any news on two powder hole?
Hmm, oh, no, no, um, I, I spoke to them last week and they're going to, the, the big question is, are they going to have the. The delivery still part of the project or not? And they didn't get, they didn't have any answers last week. So we're just, if you said you're preparing the plans, they'll be coming in with them one way or the other. Whether two pattern rules are it or not. I also met, of all people, I met with Beijing Royal yesterday.
Wow.
And they, um. Still want to do what they can do there. The problem, they were, they were very straightforward. It's right now that. Relationship between the countries is not the best. And they think it'll settle down, but for now, they cannot transfer those kinds of large sums of money. That they would need to bring this up to full scale. So they're gonna just, they're gonna see what they can put together locally. There is a talk of another, I don't know if you remember, but they, they, in addition to K to twelve. They were talking about putting a cultural center and adult education center there. And they still want to move forward with that, and they feel they can do that locally. With funding locally, so they'll be, they're totally, they just wanted to check in and it was good, they all came in. So after a time to have bad relations, you know. And I don't. I don't know how it's gonna shake out, maybe. Planning ward does international.
And how about the family's properties? How Jack, is that going?
What was that?
The, the one down by the, it's not very long.
I haven't heard anything on that. Last I heard was that the. The, it was at the board of, the sub board and, um, you know, it was the first, the writer refused. I haven't heard those.
Select board, um, turned down the writer first. They can go through with the sale. And coincidentally, the adjacent plot, that's also your contingent purchase.
I would feel better if we got our. One fifteen, which they're, they're, they're conservation commission Thursday, they think we're through. But ours feel better, we get our, we're at nine point six, our S A die. And I really like to get us up to ten, just to, I, I feel much better with all this other stuff.
What's, what's the number of ten?
Well, yeah, now it's only, it's like, I think we're at like twenty-five.
Well, we're gonna go back down, it seems like we're in the twenty census.
We're gonna go.
We're gonna drop half a point at least.
I think we're a lot.
Very well. Yeah. No, because we're gonna count all our units at one twenty-nine park or?
No, 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 I don't mean that. No, 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 we, we have the, remember the census, our overall unit count.
I know. Our overall unit count, that means our percent goes down because we have more units.
If, well, hopefully right, so.
You did?
What are you talking, we sound.
They, we.
It's just the way the math works.
The ten year, well, but, all right, well, let's hope so, but let's keep, I, 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 my concern is that we're at ten, so we're good masters of.
No, no, they're plugging in their numbers. Um, hey, related to the cutting property. Just obviously, they're gonna be doing subdivisions there. There was something on the last subdivision that we altered our standards. Can we? Update those standards so that developer doesn't have to. Do something under the old standard and you have to redo it under what we think is the new stuff? We change the. Change the sidewalks, right? We set them back from the road or something like that. Anyway, I think we played with the width.
We, we've never amended the subdivision by law.
I know, but we did for Mysteria Lane.
Oh, you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so if we want to do that for the subdivision, say, let's change our subdivision rules before the cutting land owners apply. So they don't have to redo their work and they can do it right the first time.
Okay. Uh, we can do the same process for zoning by law. So we can just, we could, all right. And, um. You know, just figure out what we want to change. I mean, we do it, but today we do the hearing, you know, the whole shebang. Uh, I think if it's, we get it going, they'd be. Well, I have to check. But I, I, I think it would probably be exactly the same as zone bylaws for, once it's been advertised. Isn't it? Do you remember that, Bob? If it's advertised, I think.
It applies.
penalized, yeah, but I'm not pi, I'm not a hundred percent human, so. I'll check. There's a weird thing in subdivision. We tried, you know, you can't have an alternate vote on the subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
And, 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 and like everybody's like, all the, the, the attorneys that like. You know, the lawyers attorneys will dig in that stuff and dig into it, like, wow, we think somebody screwed up. And nobody fixed it in like nineteen fifty. That's all I got.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Should follow the day? Bill, if you want to do the honors?
Jim, you want to get us out of this meeting?
All righty. I move to close the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And can this be by voice photo? Do we have to do it? I'm sorry?
Video, that's the role.
Everything's vocal because of video, okay. Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the meeting is, well, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, though.
Nice meeting.
Jim, Jim, how you feeling?
Good, thank you. Much better.
Good, thanks. Glad to see you're participating. Good night.
Okay. Let's see.
Night, all.
Good night, now.
On, on the other boat and get that thing fired up. For the. H P B, or whatever it's called. I got. Uh, can you do it?
Just remind everybody, Bill. That you circulated a list of training courses. So.
The rest of what?
That.
Oh, my God.
Oh, the training courses?
Yes.